They were going live? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Grosse County Township Board of Trustees Business Meeting for the 4th of November 2019. Call the meeting to order at 7:37. And let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're a little bit shorthanded tonight. Mr. Nelson and Mr. Bletcher are both excused from tonight's meeting. But we do have a quorum. We'll conduct business as published and as amended. With that, the meeting's in order. I will entertain additions or deletions to tonight's agenda. And I'm going to offer the first one, that after the audit presentation, the budget audit presentation, I'd like to add that as action item five to approve the audit.
Or?
Okay, moved by the supervisor, seconded by trustee Budney to add the, accept the audit report. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, none offered. That will be added. Also, I would like to add, request to add action item number six, which would be, if approved, the Building 63 subdivide contract and loan extension. It moved by the supervisor, seconded by Treasurer Van Oss on the building's subdivide extension. Those in favor, please signify.
Any discussion?
Yeah, it's open to this. I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Melvesto.
This has just been placed in front of us, five minutes before the start of this meeting. There will be no opportunity for the public to make any comment in regards to this. This thing should be put off, at least till the next, till the next board meeting. There's been no discussion amongst the board, you know, study session, nothing. You're gonna, we're gonna vote on $160,000 loan, additional loan, to the Airport Commission with no discussion and no ability for public input?
Okay, if you noticed, it's contingent on the, or it's intended to be contingent on the Commerce Park approval.
Then two weeks isn't gonna make a difference.
Actually, it is because-
But will not.
Because we don't meet again until the 9th of December, and the contract ends on the 1st of December. So we want to extend that because it's just an opportunity.
You are going to deny transparency and public comment on $160,000 loan?
Any other comments?
Appropriate.
Well, okay, any, again, you'll have time to present, those with objections can present it at the Commerce Park Commission. Any, any other comments on this action item?
Mike here.
He was here, he's-
He's, yeah, he's, he's around. He's back, he's back in his office right now.
Yeah, when we, when we get to that point, if we're not satisfied, we can table it, we can, we can can it. But I, it's an opportunity that may or may not continue to present itself, which is why we wanted to bring it up tonight.
All right, we'll bring it up and turn it down if it doesn't pass.
Yes, so.
And even though it is just coming to us before the meeting today, it is still taking place at a public meeting. And it is being discussed by the board as we receive it. And people who have objections to it are able to voice their concerns. If the residents aren't here to do it, certainly there are board members here who can voice their concerns. So I think that, you know, our manager was seeing an opportunity and he wanted to grasp it, and we shouldn't deny that opportunity. And we can then act accordingly.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I, Mr. Duiker does have some good news on his lease rates. I mean, every, the eight he has done are already, already leased out. He has deposited somewhat. So it's a good, I think it's a good project. I think we have an opportunity to expand a good project. That's why Mr. Duiker wants to get it on before the contract expires and we have to start over again. So, any other, any other comments on this addition to tonight's agenda? To tonight's agenda. Okay, with none offered, those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, with that, the motion carries. The, the agenda is approved as amended. With that, we have a presentation tonight. Madam Finance Director.
Um, here I am tonight to present our township audit presentation for March of 2019. Also, in the audience, Mike Georges is here from Yo and Yo, and he'll be able to answer any questions at the end if we have any. So I'll just kind of quickly go through the presentation. Oh, a lot of it, I'm sure you have seen before or heard, so, but we'll go through it. In summary, obviously, the whole report is available in the back or available online as well. Basically, in the auditor's report, there is an opinion. And the auditor, again, states that, "In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects. The financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, the aggregate discreetly presented component units, each major fund and the aggregate meaning fund information of the township of Grozeal as of March 31, 2019, and their respective changes in the financial position of cash rules were applicable therefore for the year then and in conformity with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." So it is a clean opinion. Everything they did and found is according to generally accepted accounting principles. Again, we look, we're gonna look at, oh, I want to go over some of the financial highlights in, before we get into the detail about, on page 3-1 of the audit report, we usually list the financial highlights that affected the audit for the current year. And so I thought it was important to go over them. And some of them will be in the slides as well, because it's, it's based on some of the events of the good nature that we have going on. Currently, if we go to page 3-1 of the audit, state shared revenue, and excuse me for reading it, but I'm just gonna read them anyway, they're all bullet point. State shared revenue, our second largest revenue source from governmental activities went increased by the state of Michigan by $38,527.
Just there's that, let me interrupt for just a minute. Mr. Melvesto-
Oh, okay.
Has been asked to be excused.
Okay.
Best wishes, Tom. Thanks. Go ahead.
Property taxes are single largest source of revenue, increased to just over $606 million. And you'll see in the slides, so that's an increase of 2.9%. During the current fiscal year, building revenue increased $70,000, which is still nine permits, new home permits being constructed, with a value of over $4 million. So that's good. We're still building new homes and increasing taxable value. In March 2019, the township received $539, a little over $539,000 from Wayne County for road improvements to West River and Grozeal Parkway to Church Road. In October 2018, the township paid off remaining 2014 tax limited general refunding bonds. So we paid off a couple bonds this year. As of February 13, the township purchased 30 acres of open space property in the amount of $304,000. In 2018, 2019, the township spent $3.8 million on West River Road water main replacement. So we are, continue to do water main replacements. Actually, we're going out for bonds on this board meeting for some additional water place replacement. On November 18, the township board approved a water service contract with Great Lakes Water Authority for a term of 30 years. This should provide annual substantial savings to the residents of Grozeal for years to come. And in July 1, 2018, the township of Grozeal adopted the township of Grozeal Miss Employees Health Funding Vehicle. On January 1, 2019, the township restructured employees' healthcare benefits. And both of these changes resulted in a major improvement of the retirement system unfunded actuarial accrued liability from $25 million to almost $14 million. So a lot of things were happening last year that were reflected in the financial statements. So we'll go back to the slides. In 2000, you can see taxable value is increasing. We had our big downturn in 2009, and it's starting to go up a little bit, so ever since 2011, we still fell. In 2012, we started going up. So we continue to go up, which is great. So in 2000, the fiscal year of 2018, taxable value was at a little over $606 million. And in 2019, the current taxes that just went out were at $623, so taxable value is still increasing. Oops, I'm sorry. If we look at our total township mills, they're staying about the same from last year to this year. That's just due to a little bit of headly reduction, so went from 15.44 mills to 15.41 mills. One the other way. So between the two, there's a, there's a calculation between taxable value and the amount of millages, which equals our total taxable revenue. So you can see, just because our taxable value went up, even though our millages stayed the same, we gained over, like, almost $200,000 in taxable income across the board, based on taxable value. If we look at the next slide, this is our fund balances from March of 18 to March of 19. Some of the big ones with changes, and a lot of them are just fund balances based on the amount of taxable revenue we get and then the, the construction or projects that are done from it. So actually, Recreation did really well. It went from $96,000 in March of 18 to $163,057. So Recreation Department is maintaining itself and doing very well. The Farm went from $51,000 to $40,000, and that's just revenue from the cell towers that is used to maintain the farm. Library stays about the same. Bike Path, we didn't do as many projects in this current year. They're saving for a major project. They're resurfacing a lot of the bike path, so that'll be coming down the pike. But they're saving the money, so we never have to borrow from it. They always save enough money from their millages so that they can do repairs. Drainage, there was a lot of drainage, and a lot of drainage problems. It was wet last year, and a lot of people, we gave away, not gave away, but we matched drainage grants, so that's a good thing, and it's helping up the drainage in the, in the areas. Roads stayed the same, and open space went down because of the purchase of the open space property amount of $300,000. Public Safety Building, this pretty much stays the same. This is a cell tower revenue, again, used to do little repairs around the Public Safety Building. The Drug Law Enforcement went down a little bit. We're not getting as much activity, but spending less as well, watching spending more because of the activity hasn't been as great. Fire operating declined a little bit due to benefits increases, but that, we're still at a decent level of $640,000. And the fire commit went from a million to a million, to just saving more, not spending as much, waiting for capital purchase. Look at some of the operating type activities. We want to look at water, the airport and Waters Edge. These are more business-type functions. As we know, the DPW maintains itself based on water rates. The sale of water just decreased a little bit. Sewage charges decreased a little bit. And refuse charges just went up a little bit, $20,000. If we look at airport, the Commerce Park Airport revenues raised 2.4%, which was good. Commerce Park revenue went down a little bit, and fuel sales went down a little bit because the fuel prices went down. So that's kind of like an in and out. And if we look at golf, even though the Recreation Department in hold did very well, golf was down slightly, 4%. The Marina was down 15%. And the pool was actually up 36%. I know we say it's weather dependent, but it's weather dependent. Some of it is.
We know why the Marina went down.
Yeah. If we look at our long-term debts, we can see that our total debt outstanding is about $29 million. And over my time here, this has come down a lot. It was over $60 million. So I'm, I'm happy I can see this coming to an end slowly. The public safety building's been paid off. The Building Authority bonds are for the Township Hall and for Waters Edge Restaurant Edition. And those will mature in 2025. So those are coming close to an end. And then the compensated absences are those payouts, or not payouts, but banks that people would have set aside for when they leave, their vacation and sick time. That's for everybody, long-term. Some notes payable, these are for the seawall and some equipment at Waters Edge. Those are, will be done this year, so that's off the books. The tax sewer system, those are the big SSES, the over $40 million that we get, that balance is down to $11 million. Those will start falling off in 2023, '24, '25, so those are coming to an end as well. Capital Improvement Bonds, these are all sewer and water mains. Those have varying degrees of maturity. The Judgment Bond will mature in 2026. So all these are just right around the corner. Hopefully, they'll be gone in my time here, so. And then DDA had some, in Brownfield Development, had some outstanding. So the total amount due within a year per principal and interest is a little over $4 million. And with some of its millage, some of its rates, so that's the total. So if we look at our net pension liability, for our pension, we went from $11 million to actually $14 million. And the reason why this went up, so we're slightly under the percent that we need to be to the state of Michigan. We're required to be at 60%. Our audits, audit says we were at 56.4%, and our actuaries said 61%. So it's a different number all the time. The reason why the change is, in December, when that's the valuation on that date, December 31, the stock market took a complete downward slide. So we lost, we did a $2 million swing in a matter of three months. It went from, I should actually show you, this is very kind of interesting, and I don't know how we're supposed to keep up with this. How do I put on the? I think it's kind of, oh, it did do it. Stay with me. And then I'll put it back on. Okay. So I know, like I said, I know people are looking at our pension, our liabilities, our unfunded liabilities. If we look at our summary, and this is an exhibit taken out of our, our- Actuarial for our pension, we had a report. Okay, this is our pension. So we had a report, when we report to the state, we're supposed to be 60% funded. And I know you can't see it, because I can barely see it. It is so small. Ah, okay, now it looks better. So if you see the third line down, right here, we're supposed to be 60% funded. This is how confusing it is, and this is how the value changes all the time. So we're supposed to be 60% funded, as far as the state is concerned. We, the audit says we're 57.3% funded, because they have to use GASB standards. And our actuarial says we're 61% funded. So the numbers, like I said, are all over the place. And the reason why this is like it is, because it reports on one particular given day. And as we know, as actuaries, it changes every day, but they have to pick a day to report. And the day they reported, if you look at this, the day the actuarial used and the day the audit used, if you look at the fiscal year dated 12/31/2018, for that fiscal year, the year, our pension balance, cash funding balance, was at a negative $826,000 for that fiscal year. This is how crazy this is. In the first quarter of 3/31/19, we already got back over $1 million in interest. So you can see the fluctuation of that one day, that three months later, we're up that high. So when people say, "We don't have any money," we do have almost $21 million sitting in our pension fund. And then, when you go again, for another six months, or another three months, we've gained another $500,000. So it's very hard to pick one day out of the year that we're gonna report this and make it the gospel, because we know it changes every day. So as far as the state is concerned, we will have to file a waiver for our pension. And you can see why, and we're explaining those exact same things. And hopefully, we should be, we will comply with the state. Hopefully, that should be the end of it. Also, for-
Anne, I would just add that that's gonna continue on constantly. We'll be saying this all the time.
Yep, we are dancing all over the line, so.
Do we, we don't pick that date, right?
No, they pick it. Yep, yep, they pick it. So in, in the other good news, with our net post employment benefits, like I said in our, in the financial highlights, that did go down from $25 million to $14 million. The state is satisfied with our plan, and that, we should not have to be able to file a waiver anymore. We did get approved, and they agree with our plan, with our, our trust account. And the way we did our benefits, they believe that we will be unfunded in the proper time period that they're requiring. So that's all good. Any questions on that? It's just, are we okay? Any questions? I mean, it's, I know it's hard to follow and-
When you look at it all the time.
Yeah. So we'll go to, with just our general fund. Our general fund revenue increased about $190,000 over last year. And that's because of some of the things I stated that, we'll go through it, but, so a lot of it is our licenses and permits. So we keep building new homes, we keep adding value, because new homes are still being built. So people are still coming to Grozeal and building, which is great. If you, and again, and if you look at our tax revenue for 2013, all the way up to 2019, so our tax revenue is going up. So even the $60,000 that it goes up this year, every year it goes up a little bit more, it's just helping us out. And then our state shared revenue went up about $38,000, from $891 to $930. And that's the portion that the state of Michigan gives us based on sales tax, so. Yep, yep, it's all of it. So, so with those two items, you know, you're raising your, raising enough money to keep, to keep it positive. If we look at our expenditures, our expenditures went up about $198,000 from last year to this year. Obviously, the police take up the majority of our general fund and the majority of our taxes. Last year, the police expenditures went up $185,000, which was the most of our, you can see later, it's the most of our, how expenditures went up. And that was due to, the police pension was, which was about $52,000. Two people retired unexpectedly, that threw that number up a little bit higher. And so that was, that was the difference in the expenditure cost. So this is just a kind of summary, a general fund over the last couple of years. From 2015, we, we were at a $34,000 loss, 2016, $264 loss, $252 in March of 17. These major losses were due to the unexpected remediation of Township Hall, when they had to do it for the mold. Those were almost, that was almost $200,000, and were just costs going up and our revenues staying pretty stable. Now, in 2018, 2019, we're breaking even, but our revenues are enough to account for some things that are unexpected. It's like, there were some unexpected in 18 and 19. There were some legal things that happened, but the township could absorb, absorb those. So actually, it's, we're at a nice level where we're breaking even, we're not collecting too much, and now we're not losing. So, and we do have some cushion for any major capital improvement or something that comes unexpectedly. So, and if the revenues continue to raise, then we will be at a comfortable position. And that helps with our, our MERS, some of our things are closed, so we, we can predict more what our MERS payments are from now on. And also, with healthcare being capped, with the hard cap, we can now predict those as well. So it's actually, our budgets are coming in a lot better, because we can predict those numbers, and we can see where we're at. So if you look over last cover, you can see your revenue expenditures are pretty much staying stable. And our fund balances staying stable as well, because of those last couple of years. So, all good news. Everything's kind of going in the right direction. I love it. It makes my job easy. So, is there any questions, or you got any questions for Mike, or Mike want to add anything?
Let's, yeah, excuse me, invite Mr. Georges to have a unbiased commentary.
Thanks, thanks.
What do you have for us, Mike?
I just have a couple of comments, listening to Anne. No fund has a deficit, which is very good. So none of your funds have a deficit. All are, have a positive fund balance, which is great. One thing was good, Anne captured, was your long-term debts going down. But I want to say that it's okay to have long-term debt, because long-term debt gets things done. Okay, that means that's what cities do, that's what municipalities do. They borrow for long-term. They pay it over 20, 30, 15 years. So I think it's okay to borrow money. So while it's going down, and they go back up.
Today it's going up.
It's coming back up, see, right there. I see that on the agenda. I think the change in your OPEB, your health assumptions, was great. That reduced your liability about $7 million or so, so that's really good. I think the MERS, on the other hand, is what it is. It's, you know, you're close to that 60%. You have a closed plan, so I think eventually you're gonna get funded. It's gonna take a number of years, but you're gonna get there. The plan is set. But how you get there in a one-year period's gonna keep changing because of the assumptions. People live longer. Guess what? That adds to your liability, things of that nature, so. And your plan's small enough that one or two people could affect, could affect that plan. Certainly, the stock market obviously did affect it the past year. But that's all I have. Those are, I thought, some of your good points there. Do you have any questions for Anne or myself?
Anything for Mr. Georges? Our representative from, actually, our head, you run the audit for Yo and Yo for us.
I do, I do. I'm, I'm the face, I guess. I do have people behind us. I do have the people that, that do most of the work, though, so I get to take their credit, but they do all the work. Actually, one of our staff, Mike Rolka, manager, was gonna be here, but his, he's one of our OPEB experts, so he are, are MERS experts, but his son broke his ankle, so he couldn't make it tonight.
You wind it out that badly, huh?
He did.
Mike, would you be available for a call later this week?
Sure, I'm always available for calls.
I want to make one comment. I made a copy of that page 3-1 that lists all the, I'm gonna frame it, hang it in my office until, hopefully, a better one next year.
Yep.
So it's, I mean, it was just good news. We've been, the whole board's been working hard to get everything moving in the right direction. And it looks like things are moving in the right direction. You know, they could be better, but we're moving in the right direction. So, other, other comments? Anne, thank you, Mr.-
Thanks, Sam.
Mike, thanks. Okay, I think concludes tonight's presentation. With that, we'll open it to public comment. Limited to tonight's agenda items, including the two we've added, and you know the rules. Any public comment on tonight's agenda items? Okay, none offered. With tho, with that, we'll close that portion, move the consent agenda. Mr. Treasurer.
Ah, yes, I'd like to approve of Consent Agenda 19-057. That includes the minutes of the October 14, 2019 regular meeting. Check register dated through November 1, 2019. Approval to pay bills through November 29, 2019. An island beautification committee resignation. Handicapped in-area signage and township board's attendance at holiday events resolution.
Support.
Okay, moved by Treasurer Van Oss, seconded by trustee Budney. One comment, there is one typo on the approval to pay bills, but, but what is stated there is actually, we're going with approval through November 29. Any other comments on the, Madam Clerk?
I would just like to recognize Michelle Babcock, who is resigning from the Island Beautification Committee after 12 years. who, um, is resigning from the Island Beautification Committee after twelve years, um, again citing other time commitments and constraints, but, uh, thinking also that it's time for some other people to, um, step up. And I just want to thank Michelle, 'cause she's worked very hard over the years, and she's become kind of the green thumb of the township. So, thank you, Michelle, for your service.
Thank you. Other comments on the consent agenda? None offered. Those in favor of approving the consent agenda, uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Consent agenda's approved, thank you. Move on to tonight's action items. Uh, Mr. Budney?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Uh, this is our, our annual, uh, priority snow removal, uh, motion. A motion contingent upon endorsement of the Groseal Department of Public Works Commission, the Groseal Town, that the Groseal Township Board authorized the execution of an agreement with Wayne County for priority winter maintenance services to the following local roads for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty winter snow season, uh, with the township and county each sharing in half the cost. The, uh, roads are Bellevue from Meridian to East River, Church Road from East River to West River, Ferry Road from East River to West River, Gray's Drive from Meridian to East River, Horse Mill Road from Meridian to East River, Lyons, uh, uh, from McComb to Gray's Drive, Manchester Road, East River to Meridian, Meridian, uh, Bridge to Park Lane, uh, Park Lane from Bridge to Meridian, Park Lane from Church to Oak River, Park Lane from Ferry to Bellevue, and South Point from Grow to Albemarre. The township's share in the cost of the, for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty season is twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and thirty-nine cents for twenty-one point four zero lane miles of roadway, which equates to thirteen hundred and seventy-one dollars and five cents per lane mile.
Hey, there you go, motion, did we get a second on that?
We did not. We did.
Fresh, we do now, okay. Moved by Trustee Budney, seconded by Treasurer Van Oost. Um, I'm gonna ask the guys who drive the roads early in the morning, with the value, I mean, our, our police and fire, uh, we've talked, discussed this before, is it worth the value? Is, is it a valued, do we get value for the service? And you guys are out there at the crack of dawn, what are the roads like? Is it, is it, absolutely, they're on the front line, so I...
And they're, and, uh, in, in Wayne County, I mean, they're, they're not out there like at six or seven o'clock, they're all, like, out there at two o'clock, three o'clock in the morning, so that those roads, uh, you know, are done. I happen to, you know, live on, uh, Park Lane by the, uh, by the school, and, uh, those guys are out there, uh, sometime before the snow stops falling, but certainly after. Uh, so, uh, obviously, I think it's worth it.
Other comments from the Madam Clerk?
Well, I was just gonna say, we, um, the audience, uh, watching on television couldn't see, uh, Chief Murdock nodding yes, and Chief Warnock nodding yes, that it was worth it.
In the, well, I was gonna, I was gonna say that, you know, uh, our, our, our commission, uh, I'm, you know, I'm sure will be for this, but we wanted to get it on just in case. Uh, two reasons, one, uh, at the time, uh, we didn't know whether we were gonna have a November meeting or not, and also because of the weather, you don't know if there's gonna be a snowfall.
We might be plowing before December night.
Yeah, so, uh, so we wanted to get this on, uh, prior to our meeting even.
My, my worst fear is a school bus unable to stop or maintain control. And, you know, any other community, it slides into a parking lot, or it hits a stop sign or a telephone pole. Here, it slides into the river. Uh, so that's, that's for the school buses, in my being concerned. Um, so I will support it. Any other comments on this investment? None offered. Those in favor of, again, contingent on the endorsement of the Groseal Department of Public Works Commission, Groseal Township Board hereby authorize the execution of agreement with Wayne County for priority winter maintenance services to the following local roads for the two thousand nineteen, twenty winter snow season, as previously read, uh, with the township and county each sharing in half the cost. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None offered, that passes. Thank you, Mr. Budney. Okay, I will introduce the second one, and this is, well, I'll just, I'll start, uh, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but, um, again, because, uh, Mr. Malvesto isn't here, and the, uh, motion was contingent upon, what that means is if the DPS Commission does not pass it, you'll come back and let us know.
Correct.
And then it will come, you know, you'll, it'll go back to the commission for revision, so...
Okay.
There is a process.
And that, that same will apply, uh, on the air, on the, on the Commerce Park. Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, I recommend, recommend the Groseal Township Board of Trustees establish rules for all, for public comment at all open meetings of township public bodies, including the Board of Trustees and all township commissions and committees. And among the rules, any member of the public in attendance at any open meeting is welcome to address the moderator, identify him or herself with name and address, and make public comment limited to three minutes. The moderator of the meeting has discretion to allow additional time or to curtail speech outside constitutional protection.
Support.
They're moved by the supervisor, seconded by Trustee Budney. Um, background, I just, what I have written here, within Michigan's Open Meeting Act, MCO, uh, specifically, MCO fifteen point two six three mandates the opportunity for members of the public to comment at open meetings of a public body under rules established and recorded by that body. The township board adopted the above rules in April two thousand fifteen with the implication that the same rules be applied to all public open meetings. This legislation codifies the township rules. All other requirements of the Open Meetings Act, Public Act two sixty-seven, nineteen six, seventy-six, also apply to all open meetings of all township public bodies. Uh, just wanted to remove any confusion, and this is the beginning of, of an educational program to advise the legal requirement, all our commissions, all our committee, uh, members, as what's expected at their public meetings. Those are the ones that are doing the heavy lifting, um, and we do a lot of our budgeting based on their recommendations, on the work they've done. We're gonna keep everybody on the, on the same page in terms of legality, what's required, uh, what isn't required. We will go into expect, state expectations for things like minutes, publication, et cetera. So it's the beginning of a, of an educational program. Probably should've started it a while back, but it's, it's, we're gonna get started on it. Other comments, questions? With none, uh, I guess I said it all. Uh, with that, uh, Groseal Township Board of Trustees hereby establishes the rules for public comment at all open meetings of township public bodies, including the Board of Trustees and all township commissions and committees. Any member of the public in attendance at any open meeting is welcome to address the moderator, identify him or herself with name and address, and make public comment limited to three minutes. The moderator of the meeting has discretion to allow additional time or curtail speech outside constitutional protection. Those in favor of this recommendation, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None offered, thank you, we will get to work with that. Sec, let's see, move on. Ah, now we're gonna spend some money. Okay, I recommend that the Groseal Township Board of Trustees enter into an inter-local agreement with the Shared Information Network Consortium for the establishment, operation, and administration of a management information system to serve the participating law enforcement agencies.
Support.
Uh, Jim was louder. Okay, we'll give it to Ted, we'll share, we'll share.
We'll share.
Uh, moved by Supervisor, seconded by the Treasurer. And I'm gonna invite, uh, Chief Warnock, I'll read the, uh, introduction, I'm gonna let Chief Warnock give us a little additional background. Says, "We have been in agreement with CINC, which is the, uh, uh, Shared Information Network Consortium, since nineteen ninety-nine. This agreement started with five other agencies, and now seven other agencies have joined and making total of thirteen agencies, including Groseal. This allows our agency to purchase state-of-the-art software, hardware for reduced price, conserve scarce tax dollars, enhance the ability of law enforcement in the downriver area to recognize crime trends, therefore enhancing safety of all its residents. The initial cost is approximately six thousand seven hundred twenty dollars, half due on signing, the other half due in October fifteenth of two thousand twenty. Future cost will be thirty-five fifty-two a year. We're currently paying fifty-nine ninety-four a year. It's to be a savings of twenty-four forty-two per year after the initial startup fee." Chief, could you give us the background on who's involved in this, why?
Did a pretty good job.
Why it's, why, it's kind of a, I was, I hate to say no-brainer, but this is, this is an opportunity.
It's our whole computer system, it's very important. Like I said, we have eight cities in it now, we're adding four, which will be the city of Lincoln Park, Allen Park, South Gate, and River Rouge. And the more cities you have, the cheaper it's for all of us, which is a great thing. There was a city downriver, I won't mention what it is, they wanted to go out on their own, for their own, and it cost well over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So that's not a good thing. So, when you go in with this, it'll cost us for the next two years, about three thousand dollars extra, but in the long run, it'll be probably fifteen hundred dollars cheaper every year after that. And plus, we're adding, right now, we have Tyler Technology is what it's, the computer system is, all of our reports, all of our booking for our prisoners, and all of our in-house records, plus we're adding all of our traffic, uh, accidents, and all of our tickets will be going through them also. And also, say, we have, uh, somebody committed a crime in Lincoln Park, all's we have to do is go on there, go right to Lincoln Park, and we can get information right from them. River Rouge, South Gate, which is, the more cities, the better for everyone. And, um, let's say somebody wanted to do a FOIA, say, for Groseal, from Lincoln Park, they would have to have our permission, say, Lincoln Park, they went to Lincoln Park and want to come to Groseal, they'd have to have our permission. So people just can't FOIA everything unless they come to the city it happened at, so, which is a good thing for us to. But, uh, you did a great job doing it, I just know it's gonna save us a lot of money, and I believe, and, um, Mr. Assorti has a copy of it, it was a month ago, and, and I've talked to the other chiefs, and everybody's on board for it. And we have, like I say, we also have, um, let me find my one sheet here. Uh, we have budget money for it, and we have, uh, money in our tech fund for that also, so we'll be all set for the money.
Yeah, my, my, as we spoke earlier, my initial impression is that this is sort of a force multiplier, that now, all these police, law enforcement agencies are speaking to each other real-time. Uh, some of the communication roadblocks have been remu, removed, and can all work together for a specific item or for a number of items, so...
Right.
And it's saving us money, so I, I, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be doing this.
That's a no-brainer.
I'll ask you to the rest of the board if they have any comments or questions.
I don't know. Adam?
Just, I think I did understand that you said, um, Attorney Assorti has looked at the agreement.
Yes, I, yes, he has.
Thank you.
Chief Matthews from Brownstown, he's pretty much in charge of it, and he's, he's a whiz, a whiz at this stuff. I'm not very good at computers, and I'm, I'm getting better, but it's, uh...
You've got the deputy chief here.
Yeah, he's good, he's real good at computers. Um, I'm learning, I'm old-school, but I'm learning. But, uh, Chief Matthews is just, he's great at, he has, we have meetings every month, and he lets us know everything, money spent, everything, and you just can't, everybody has the vote, and, uh, it's a no, like I said, it's a no-brainer, that's gonna help us in the long run.
All right, thanks, Chief. Again, any other questions, comments for the Chief? Okay, those in favor of approving, uh, the entry into an inter-local agreement with the Shared Information Network Consortium for the establishment, operation, administration of a management information system to serve the participating law enforcement agencies, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None offered, that, motion carries. Thanks, Chief. Uh, where are we? Number four, I believe that was yours, Mr. Treasurer?
Uh, yes, I'd like approval, uh, for capital improvement bonds, limited tax, general obligation bonds resolution. This is to approve the attached resolution authorizing issuance of two thousand and nineteen capital improvement bonds, and to authorize a town, township financial director to receive competitive bids for bonds and the award of the bonds to the lowest qualified bidder.
I absolutely support.
Very good. Moved by the Treasurer, seconded by Trustee Budney, 'cause we know where most of the money's gonna be spent.
Uh, just, just as a little background, uh, maybe Anne wants, I, I don't think we have to read the resolution, but basically, it's, we're going out for bonds for the sewage treatment plant, and for water main repairs, the sewage treatment plant is, is a major upgrade that's long passed overdue. And of course, we have several sewage, wa, water, water mains and sewage treatment sewage lines that we need to upgrade and maintain. Uh, with that being said, the interest rate currently is estimated to be, is estimated to be less than three percent. So this is absolutely an excellent time to go out for these bonds. Uh, so I hope the township board will support the issuance.
Well, thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Any questions, comments? Just as all these other bonds are dropping off, we're gonna pick up some more general obligation.
Yeah, one last question. This, this will not increase your water rates or your sewer rates, uh, due to this bond issuance, because, uh, uh, we're, uh, expiring some of the bonds that we currently have, and just try to stay on top of it.
Keep those funds available to keep the progress going. Okay, uh, with no other comments, those in favor of approving the resol, resolution authoring issuance of the two thousand nineteen capital improvement bonds, and to authorize the township finance director to receive competitive bids for the bonds, and to award the bonds to the lowest qualified bidder, those supporting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None offered? So that carries, thank you. Mr. Duker, you're not up yet?
Yeah, nice try, Mike, don't worry, take your time.
I appreciate your enthusiasm, but let's see, we need to beat somebody else up first.
No, that's, oh, yeah, the audit.
The audit report.
Yep, the audit report, so... Do you wanna do that one, do you wanna?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'll, recommend that the Groseal Township Board of Trustees hereby resolves to accept the Township of Groseal financial audit report with supplemental information for the fiscal year ended March thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, as presented.
Support.
Okay, moved by the Supervisor, seconded by Trustee Budney. Well, we just saw the audit presentation, does anybody have any further, any further comments on it, from the board? I, like I said, the numbers are trending good, I'm gonna, I'm gonna frame that, uh, one, the highlights, until we get a better one next year. Uh, those in favor of accepting the, those on the, yeah, those in favor of accepting the, uh, resolving to accept the Township of Groseal financial audit report with supplemental information for the fiscal year ended March thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None offered, that carries, again, thank you, uh, Mr. Georges, thank you, Ms. Darsniak. Number six?
Uh, Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to propose legislation based on the recommendation from the Airfield Commerce Park Manager. The Groseal Township Board hereby expands the Building sixty-three subdivision contract with D and G Construction in the amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The initial seven hundred thousand dollar loan shall be deferred for one year, and the additional funding shall come from the internal loan through the township at the same rate being paid back within that timeframe. The contract extension is pending the Commerce Park Commission approval. I need a second.
Second.
Right, did, this has been presented as kind of a, an opportunity for the township. Uh, we passed the resolution, a action to loan the DPS, or the, I'm sorry, Airfield Commerce Park, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars to renovate, uh, Building sixty-three. In that renovation and subdivision, we added eight new units at two thousand square feet apiece. Uh, before the doors were even on, they were all sold. Uh, we've got commitments from contractors, and most of Myron residents to utilize those. So we, the loan itself was gonna generate about thirteen thousand dollars, thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars in revenue to the township. Uh, by extending this by the a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, uh, that will generate about twenty-four, twenty-five hundred additional funds, uh, bringing that up to somewhere in the vicinity of eighteen, nineteen thousand dollars to the township as revenue. Uh, the reason for the urgency is, number one, we're, we're all very excited that we were able to lease these, and the rate that we were able to lease them, we have people that are interested in the two new ones that we're contemplating putting up if the board approves it. So we're looking forward to going through, going forward with this. Mike, you wanna add anything?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Um, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Treasurer, as Mr. Treasurer stated, this is kind of an opportunity, it's not, um, you know, just wanted to present it, I'm sorry, it is kinda in last minute, we've been working with the contractor on trying to get a price for additional units, um, and we have some parties interested, but the contract that we have for the build-out of the eight units is scheduled to be done and completed by December first. So we're kind of in a squeeze here where we have a demand for more units and a contractor on site. And, you know, I, I believe, and the contractors indicated if we go out past, you know, if they have to come back to the facility, A, they aren't unsure of their timeframe, and B, it will likely cost more, so I have to re-mobilize and come back onto site. Um, the eight units have been fully pre-leased out with a one-month deposit. Um, so as soon as the building's complete, we should have eight brand-new tenants in there. Um, that was kind of the way, the one-month holding deposit becomes our deposit on the lease. Uh, all eight are island residents, all eight are local business owners. Um, so we have an opportunity here to add two additional. I'll kinda show you a refresh of the, um, a project here. So we have Building sixty-three, and I've talking with the commission and working with Angela, who is, uh, working for the airport, eight hours a week right now doing some marketing stuff. We're going to likely rename this building just for a marketing purpose to kinda give it a fresh update. Uh, but we have Building sixty-three here on the north side, and these, uh, the east end is where we're building the initial eight units. You can kinda see it in the box here. And then if you recall, part of the, uh, other section of this project was doing some rehab work in Building sixty-one, sixty-two to make it adequate for, uh, storage facilities. We're moving the storage operation from sixty-three into sixty-one, sixty-two. That included fixing the electrical and a roof coating. Um, we've also moved Fish and Wildlife temporarily into the offices in the front side, generating some additional revenues for us. Um, so looking at the, uh, eight units, kind of an overhead view, there's a lot on the drawings, but, um, these eight units were the initial ones that we're building. Um, I'll show you some pictures of kind of progress along the way there. And these are the two additional units that we're, uh, looking at adding. So the two additional units are, you know, I approved, uh, several thousand, we had some cost savings in the project, so part of that, I approved a several thousand dollar increase in the project to, um, plum these two units with electrical and everything else to already come down there, because we had to add it in later on. We'd have to go into each unit, drill a hole in the wall. It's just, logistically, it's much smarter to run it now with all the walls exposed and open. Um, so the conduits and everything have already been run into these two in case we do make them units. This unit already has all the walls up. This unit needs one, the south unit needs one additional wall put up, and we need some garage doors cut in and heaters installed. So I expect the not-to-exceed prices, I believe, high. I think I can work with the contractor on that. Initially, with the eight units, we paid eighty-seven thousand dollars per unit to be developed. You know, the not-to-exceeds were eighty thousand per unit. I think we're gonna be able to work that down. There's existing bathrooms in the middle of these two facilities that I think we're gonna keep. It's a, it's a block structure that I'm not interested in demoing. So it's cheaper to rehab the bathrooms in existing and kinda, uh, divide them up and put a storage room in one of them. So one unit will be bigger, one unit, the south unit will be a little smaller. Um, but that's kinda where we're at. So all eight of those have been leased. We're looking at adding, uh, those two additional on there to bring it to ten. And those ten units is roughly the halfway point in the building. Um, so, you know, it kinda is logical to come to the halfway point and then looking at the building as a whole. If we, I think, if we spring for these two units, the commission and I would settle down for a little while and look at what the demand is moving forward. Um, because we're basically maxed out on this half of the building in terms of utilities, plumbing, electrical. If we were to crack open the other half of the building, it's another large infrastructure upgrade. So we're looking at another investment of probably seven hundred thousand dollars to do, you know, eight to ten units on that side. That side's a little more prepped, the ceiling's already painted, the walls are, there's a lot less mason work. Um, so moving forward with that, it's, you know, I think these two are a logical step forward. We've had interest from three additional parties for units already. Um, I had a very good conver- I met with an individual last week and had a good conversation. They're interested in utilizing a double unit for a, um, golf simulator setup. And has indicated that, you know, he'd be willing to put down a deposit for both additional units that we're building out. I'm not willing to take a deposit for him because I can't commit to a timeframe, obviously, without, uh, funding and the contractor lined up. So we have, you know, I believe, uh, the demand to at least fill the additional two units and the ten there. Um, I'll show you kinda some pictures of where we're at right now with the eight that we're completing, and then I'll go over a couple of, some numbers with you, too. So this is our south side here. You can see, we gotta put one more door in, but, um, these are all the fourteen by fourteen overhead doors. This was actually taken today. Driveway basis prep compo will be pouring the concrete. We're kinda under the gun, too, on concrete, but, uh, we're gonna fit it in here. We'll probably have to put some blankets on it to keep it warm. Um, we're waiting for inspection on the stone base, so once those are done, that should be poured, I'm hoping, by Wednesday this week. Uh, the inside pictures are a little hard to get because we don't have our LED lighting up yet, but, um, this is kinda the interior of one of the units. You'll see a vent fan in the back corner, radiant tube heater overhead, drywall that's still gonna get mud, uh, mud and paint done. And then we're doing like an acoustical insulation in between the walls. Um, so, basically, yeah, we're putting up steel stud divider walls and a fourteen by fourteen garage door. Every unit gets their own panel. All the utilities are fully subdivided. Um, I think I've had the, the pleasure of walking a few of the board members through it, but not all yet. Looking back, the lower wall will get painted once the drywall gets painted, but again, you can see all the electrical equipment here. Um, everybody gets their own generator, the panels in there. Here's the overhead door. Simple garage space is very straightforward, nothing too complex. Um, but everything's gonna be new and fresh. Um, some of the numbers, you know, the, with just the eight units, we're gonna be generating roughly a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of revenue per year. Um, with the loan that we initially took from the township, there's fifty-three thousand dollars of debt tied to that. So roughly seventy-five, seventy thousand dollars of, um, you know, new cash flow for the airport to play with. Uh, the additional two units would add another twenty-five hundred a month roughly to, uh, those numbers with a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of debt tied to it. So the debate is, you know, we're, as a township, we are obviously limited in how we can obtain funding. Um, the options are, we could ask you to add it into the long-term loan. I'm not sure if the township's willing to do, to do that or not. That's why I kinda set it up as, just do it as a one-year if we could and bump it, bump the loan one year and, um, do the hundred and sixty thousand or the lower, I'm hoping a lower amount, um, as a one-year loan, and we'll pay that back with the first-year revenue off the facility, basically, and then pick up the loan that was approved. You know, so, talking with Ann, and as you just heard on your bond payments as well, I mean, we're seeing bond, bond payments or interest rates potentially under three percent. So if we get into the other half or wanna continue to develop, I mean, that may be something the commission and I look at as, uh, refinancing or, you know, seeing what kinda rates we can get under that. So there's, there's some options for funding. It's just kinda, we're in this squeeze now, and I felt I wanted to bring this opportunity to the board and at least show it to you. You know, I think it's, if the board isn't comfortable with moving forward with it at this point, that's fine. We'll probably, we may lose the tenant, we may not, and it's not an issue. I mean, we can come back to you with more information and details at that time, and I think there's always gonna be a demand there. It's just kind of a cost savings and, you know, when you have somebody in the hopper to, to do two more units, I think it's worthwhile. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and, um, see what your thoughts were.
Hey, comments from the board other than the ones I'm gonna make? I, to me, this is a, you know, it was just a, a, an opportunity. When you have, when you've leased out the eight we've already done, you've got deposits on them, we have the contractor in place. We have a, something of a time constraint because our next, his contract ends on the first of December, and our next board meeting is on the ninth. I think we're, we're taking a prudent action here to keep this, keep this contract alive, get those next two units done, get them fixed, leased out. Again, the, the Commerce Park Commission can parse the fine details and will rely on their expertise to say, because they're the ones who brought the thing, you know, the original eight to us. It, uh, seems to have worked out to be a pretty good idea, so if the, if the Commerce Park Commission considers this a good idea to go forward, then we've done the right thing. If they say this is too risky or it's not the right time to do that, it's, it's their call at this point, should the board approve it from our end.
Sure, and I, I think if I make the quick comment, I mean, I've had a conversation with my chairman and, and several other members of the commission, and they're supportive. It's just we haven't gotten together as a group and, and kinda put the, put the stamp on this, so.
How do you plan on getting that approval?
Uh, we need to look at bumping up one of our commission meetings, because I actually think our attendance at the next one's gonna be short, so I've been talking with chairman about moving that. Um, and trying to see if we can get the commission together sooner.
Cause that's a week from.
Correct.
Other comments for Mr. Duker?
So I, I, I have actually two. One is on the, um, actual motion, and, um, I would just like to, um, see if we could add some wording at the end. The contract extension is pending the Commerce Park Commission's final approval. Could we add pending and contingent upon?
Sure. Yeah.
Tie your hands a little bit.
Sure. Not a problem.
So I, my, my commentary or my opinion, um, is, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, we had a little outburst, um, from one of our trustees about last-minute items coming to agendas, and, and I guess I've become known for, um, always kind of defending the loose agenda, right? An agenda that you bring to a meeting as you, um, build the meeting, and then you approve the agenda. You ha- you can add and you can delete. And I think last-minute items are important if they're really like a last-minute item. And, uh, I want to preserve that opportunity for our managers and our departments to bring things to the board that pop up suddenly.
Yep.
Uh, when you have an opportunity. And it always stays within the, the prerogative of the board to put a contingency on it and to have it investigated afterwards, but to allow you to proceed with something that otherwise might slip through our hands. And, and I think, um, the way you've written this, you know, we'll be able to do that. And so I think, uh, I think you've done a good thing in that sense. You, you've seen an opportunity that we have. You're not able to get your commission, uh, together in, you know, quick enough to bring it to the board with a voted-on recommendation. We're not likely to meet again before the contract runs out, so we're trying to help you set a stage to make something happen and not be something that holds you back. That's how I see this. And I think it's important to explain that to our community and, um, and that you should always have that opportunity to bring something to us. We need to be flexible.
Sure.
As, as a body. So, um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, and I, I think I've expressed that, too. I mean, that's kinda one of the challenges, you know, the airport and Commerce Park and Enterprise Fund, so it's somewhat like a private business, and, you know, we do these deals, and sometimes we kinda get into a pinch where we had items late. Obviously, that's not my goal, especially without all the members present, but, you know, sometimes when you have an opportunity, we just need to move along. I mean, we did similar situation with the east side of Hangar One, if you recall. I mean, it was, we got into a pinch where we needed to approve the contract, and we had a tenant on the line that we were gonna lose if we didn't start moving with it. So there's, unfortunately, there's times where, you know, we need to move a little faster than what's traditional, and, and I think the board's always been willing to work with the airport and the Commerce Park on that if it makes sense. So I appreciate the opportunity.
I mean, government pace is, is glacial, right? And business has to move faster, and when the two are combined, we have to find a compromise somewhere in the middle. So, uh, I think this, this works.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Other comments from the board?
No, I think you guys have said it all.
Alright, with that, um, okay, though, based on the recommendation from the Airfield Commerce Park Manager, the Groseal Township Board hereby extends the Building sixty-three subdivision contract with D and G Construction in the amount not to exceed a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The initial seven hundred thousand loan shall be deferred for one year, and the additional funding shall come from an internal loan through the township at the same rate, being paid back within that timeframe. The contract extension is pending and contingent on the Commerce Park Commission's final approval. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none offered? So, Mike, thanks.
Thank you.
I think it's an opportunity.
Appreciate the support.
Okay, and that concludes tonight's action items. With that, Clerk's report, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Just a couple of things. Um, the Election Commission, which is comprised of the Township Treasurer, the Township Supervisor, and the Township Clerk, uh, met this, uh, evening. Moved the combination of precincts. So I'm just letting you know ahead of time that, um, while physically things won't change much, um, we tonight took a step to work with the state to combine precincts four and five into one precinct four. So what does that mean? We, with the new laws in voting, enabling no-excuse absent voting, we are now having many, many more absentee ballots. And so, um, Brian has made a plan. And for the March twenty-twenty, um, primary election, we're going to be having three absent ballot counting boards uh, housed here at Township Hall, and we will still have four live polling, uh, places. Um, Precinct one and two will still be at the Presbyterian Church. Precinct three will be at the Episcopal Church, St. James', and Precinct four, which will now be a combination of four and five, but a, a different, um, I guess, I guess what we're going at is for a different number ratio, right? Um, and it enables us to hire less precinct inspectors for the building, and we can shift those precinct inspectors into a counting board and thus not raise our expenses for the election. So when it comes to the March twenty-twenty primary, you'll still be able to vote in one of our three, uh, live voting locations. Or if you're going to be one of our growing number of absent ballot voters, we will now have three boards to be active in here on Election Day to count those, so that we can have our results before midnight. Um, our goal is, by the November twenty-twenty general election, um, to have four absent voter counting boards and to still have the four live precincts. Um, we've budgeted for next year to, um, acquire one more tabulator, um, to do that. Now, larger communities can afford the expense of getting a high-speed tabulator, but that's prohibitive for a community of our size. And we find it works just very well having the regular tabulator and accounting board. And it involves, uh, more people, and it keeps the, kind of the voting community active, right? So, um, and then we've been getting a lot of phone calls, uh, about the election tomorrow. Well, on Groseal, there is no election tomorrow. We are a township, and we do not, we do not have anything to put on the ballot. We had no millages, we had nothing, so we're not having an election tomorrow. So, um, I hate to disappoint you, but, um, our next election will be in March of two thousand and twenty. Um, we are still, uh, looking to recruit and hire poll inspectors, and so if that's something that you're interested in doing, um, sixteen and older, uh, we can use you. We can use a few sixteen-year-olds in each of the precincts. Um, if you're a Wayne County resident, you qualify. You don't have to live on Groseal to be an election inspector in Groseal. And so, um, if you're interested in that, contact our staff at Township Hall, and they'll set you up. Brian, do you have anything that you wanna add? Okay, so that's it for the Clerk's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, let's see, six precincts, five precincts, four precincts, but the, uh, the, opening up the absentee, that's where the voting's gonna be moving. It, it just makes sense to keep it a lot more efficient. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Treasurer?
Uh, thank you, Brian. For the month of September, Groseal had eleven million, three hundred ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars invested in various accounts. These accounts generated a total of twenty-five thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars, uh, which is about, uh, one point three-two percent. Uh, it's getting better. It's kinda stabilized now. Uh, but those are all available on my website if you wanna see where the money is at. Our office continues to con- collect unpaid two thousand and nineteen summer tax bills. The late fee is three percent until the end of November and accumulates at one percent per month until delinquency date of March first, two thousand and twenty, at which time you'd have to render that payment to Wayne County. The two thousand and twenty PET tags are now available at the Treasurer's office. These tags are valid until twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. The fee is six dollars. Please bring verification of rabies vaccination. One person, your two twenty tags. Uh, the Commerce Park meeting will be the third Monday of this month. If we do, if we decide to have a, a gathering earlier than that, we'll post it on the website, and we'll also post it on, uh, Groseal Connect. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. We'll move into our trustee liaison report. We have one. Um, I did not get any notes from anybody else. Have you, unless you've got some information? Mr. Buddy, you're up.
I, I feel bad, uh, that I'm here. I should, I look at this list, and I, I feel like I should be with the other trustees away, but, uh, uh, what I have is, uh, a week from tomorrow, November twelfth, is our DPS meeting, uh, here in the boardroom. Uh, I have been told that there is a good chance we will have a ZBA meeting this month, which would be the twenty-sixth. Uh, although it is not confirmed yet, so, uh, uh, just look at the website to see if we're gonna have a meeting. And, uh, our, uh, our Q and A, our question and answer, uh, meeting will be- And uh, our, our Q and A, our question and answer uh, meeting will be Wednesday, the 27th of November. And that'll be the last one for this year. Uh, we're going to take, uh, take December off. So uh, please come prepared with your questions and we'll try and get you answers. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Bundy. Let's see, uh, Mr. Malvesto is there. Chief, do you have any reports from, in his stead? Any reports from the fire department? Anything we need to know about? There's always, I mean, you guys are always busy. It's not like you're sitting around with, with nothing to do. Chief?
Wow. I must've shrunk.
Sorry Duncan.
Yeah, Anne's, Anne's so tall.
High heels. So, uh, just a couple of things.
Not that there's anything wrong with that. Chief. Before this goes downhill.
Yeah, just a, just a couple of notes. Uh, 14 calls over the weekend, Saturday and Sunday, 14 rescues. Uh, we're probably going to hit 700 calls this year total. Uh, we're, we're, we're going 90 mile an hour. And then just a, a quick update, uh, we sent the storage garage out for bid. So I hope to bring that before the board back into, in December, your last meeting in December. So, and if we do approve this, this project based on numbers, uh, we're, we're talking about a spring start date.
There, there's a lot of moving parts to that. We talk about this almost every day. Once we get that storage, we get the dive trailer secured, we get better access to the drive, dive trailer, better timely response from here. Um, that's all contingent on it. October was Fire Safety Month and we didn't get to discuss it much, but we just saw in the newspapers that five young boys died in house fires within what, the last week?
If you've ever been to the fire station, right now, we are packed with equipment. I mean, we're, we're at a point where you can't move within, within the station. And uh, if we get audited by OSHA, I, I know what's coming. So, but also we have equipment sitting outside. $80,000, $82,000 dive trailer, that type of equipment sitting outside. So it's, it's not, it's not practical.
Any comments on, on, on again, these, the latest fire situation? I know we, you remind, check your smoke detectors. Check your carbon monoxide detectors and.
First of the year. Change them. And you know, my experience with lithium battery ones, they seem to, to last a little bit better. They're a little more expensive, but they last a little bit longer. Uh, some of these new ones are out are giving you a 10-year life on a battery, on the smoke and CO detector. So uh, that, that's probably a good way to go. And if you don't have them, please get them. Also, fire extinguishers are also a very important item to have within the house. And the big thing is, is if you go in most homes like I do and Rusty does, uh, people have their, their uh, fire extinguishers packed underneath the kitchen sink or in the closet, you know, next to the kitchen. Let, do what I do. Mine's hanging by the garage door, going out into the garage, the pedestrian door, going outside. And the reason for that, why it's outside, forces you to leave the building, gather your thoughts, and then make a rash decision if it's, if it's something that you think you can control with a fire extinguisher. If not, you get out. So if you're in the midst of it, sometimes you lose the ability to uh, rationalize how big and how fast that fires is growing. So it's, I highly advise you put it in the garage, next to the, next to the door hanging.
And in your kitchen? You don't want it right next to the range top? You want it a fair distance away?
Right. So, so, yep, that's all I have.
Thanks, Chief. We'll have a, we'll expect an update in December on holiday lighting, wiring, and Christmas trees. And no, no through-the-roof fires. And can, nope. Okay, thanks, Chief. Um, Ms. Affair, would you like to cover for rec, please? You always do anyway, so.
Good evening. I gotta, I gotta raise it just a little bit. Sorry, Chief. Um, good evening. Um, just a couple announcements from recreation. Um, our next festival meeting is um, Wednesday, November 20th at 7:00 PM. And the CRC, Community Recreation Commission, we have combined November and December. We usually do that. Um, will be December 5th at 6:00 PM. So that will be November and December combined for the Community Recreation Commission. Um, just a couple announcements. Um, we've been, you know, doing a lot of activities with our seniors with the new bus, those types of things. Transportation is moving and grooving. And I've been talking to a lot of our seniors just through those services and, and how to reach out to them. I think I spoke about a month ago. Um, a lot of our seniors do watch the, the board meetings. Um, but trying to get information to them is definitely a challenge. They're not on social media. So just a couple of things I wanted for our seniors that are watching tonight that if they are in need of any assistance with, with pretty much anything. I know we don't have a, a senior center. Um, a lot of communities do have a senior center director. Um, and we do not. I am one person with, with my staff, Annette, who helps me with everything. And I thank her um, publicly today for everything that she's done to, to keep rec going. Um, but just any seniors that are watching, if they need help with meals on wheels, getting in touch with the right people to get meals delivered to their home. Um, and also for the transportation, whether it's on island or off island, just to call the department. We will find, you know, a way to get you in. I know our hours are only 12:30 to 4:30. Um, but if there is an emergency need, we can, we can definitely try to make some arrangements for our seniors. So I just wanted those seniors watching to know that they do have somebody to call, whether it's myself at the office. I'm learning, we have a lot of seniors on this island that are alone and they don't really have a lot of help. And um, I'm just learning that as I'm, I'm dipping more into that, that population. So um, letting our seniors know that. The next um, senior luncheon is December 11th at 12:30 and that's at the farm. Our October luncheon, we had, I think, 27 seniors, which was a very, very nice number. We had a great, great meal. Um, and it's fellowship, it's talking, you know, I'm there. Um, Chairman Chad's usually there. Um, and we just have a nice time with our seniors. And it does get them out of their, their houses or their apartments, especially in the dead or winter. Um, and we do free transportation that day on the luncheons as well. And then also, our next senior outing, that is with the big bus, is a trip to Meyer. That's usually our, the shopping is, I'm learning, a little bit more popular than the luncheons. They like to go shopping. Um, and that is November 20th. And you do need to call the rec department to reserve a seat on the bus. And our luncheons, like when we, we offer the, the senior luncheons that are off island, those have not been too popular. So this is a trial and error with our new smart bus of what our seniors would like to do. We had a request to take them to the casino. Now, I don't know about that just yet. I don't know if we're equipped to do that. But um, and then we also have a trip to the mall, Southland Mall. Um, and that is on December 4th. And all this information, again, website, um, the new app, Grosse Ille Connect, and also in your profile with the cute little boy on the front. Everything is right here. So seniors, if you need anything, just call the department. Um, I actually had a senior call. Wanted some help with downloading a form for um, their vehicle. And I said, I can do that in five seconds because I have a computer. They did not. Stuff like that. You know, that, that might be a little bit easier for us to do at the rec department. We're, we're definitely there for them. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there tonight. Um, a couple of events coming up, even though the, everything's kind of shut down with the rec department, we still do fun things. And I also want to shout out to the Nature and Land Conservancy. They have some events coming up. The Alprowell on November 2nd, that's at 6:30. And then the, what? Oh, did they cancel that?
No.
Oh, it is. I'm sorry. I've been gone for a little while. So I apologize for that. Um, the annual meeting, I know, we have not had that one. Um, that is November 9th at um, 10:00 AM. And that is at the Grosse Ille Golf and Country Club. And then also the Grosse Ille Historical Society, they have their Holiday Boutique. That is a big one on the island. And that's at the Customs House, November 22nd through December 22nd. And the hours of that are Friday from 2:00 to 8:00, and Saturday and Sunday from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Rec events, um, Island Glow, that's um, recreation and DDA. We, and township, we all kind of work together on that one. That is Friday, December 6th. And that starts at 6:00 PM at the Commons. And that's a island tradition. We all know what goes on, the Santa Claus and all the fun stuff. Following that, December 7th is Breakfast with Santa Claus. And that is at Centennial Farm. That's through the rec department from 10:00 AM till noon. And then we also have the Elf Workshop. We, I started that one last year. And last year, we had about 25 kids. That's kind of a new program. And the kids can, can come to the farm and they, we do crafts with them. For, you know, it's fun for the kids because they get to wrap it and that's the present that they put under the tree for mom, dad, grandma, grandpa. So um, we had a nice turnout last year. So we're going to continue that program. And again, that's December 14th from 10:00 AM until noon. Um, and then also, I just want to um, thank my staff personally. Sometimes you don't thank your staff enough. You know, our, the rec department is moving in a really good direction financially. Um, and I, I don't want to take all the credit for that. I, I attribute that to my staff and the teamwork that we have put together in the two and a half years that I have been here. Also with the guidance of um, our Township Manager and Finance Director. I can't do everything. It, it is a team environment that we work in as we accomplish the goals um, to become financially stable. So thanks to both of my superiors and also the board for the support over the, the two years that I've been here. And we'll continue to save money as needed, spend where we definitely need it. And you know, the marina is definitely um, the center of attention for the rec department right now with those repairs and the high water that we've had. So that's going to be coming to you very soon. Thank you. Any questions?
I, I, I don't think there was no stone left unturned. You covered, you covered a lot of territory.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, without Mr. Blatcher here, Chief, Deputy Chief, and updates from uh, Police Department?
As you can see, a few of us have a little bit of scruff on our face for the last couple of days. Yeah, it's awful gray too. I don't like it. But um, we uh, a lot of places do the No Shave November for our charity. And uh, we're doing that for November. And we picked, our charity's going to be the Rainbow Connection, which is uh, it makes wishes come true for Michigan children with life-threatening medical conditions. And it started, actually was started by L. Brooks Patterson back in 19, it's around 1980. I know he had a, when I was reading about it, he had a friend, two friends, and two children perish in a plane crash. But one of the, I'm sorry, the, the wife lived. And so he started a golf outing for that first, for Clarkston students. And that kind of got so big that uh, in 1985, they started the Rainbow Connection. It was a wish-granting organization. And the first wish was granted for a little boy wanted to shadow box with Muhammad Ali. So he came to Children's Hospital and uh, he did the shadow boxing with them. And it's for uh, just Michigan children. And they get to go to camp, all kinds of different uh, opportunities for them. And since that has started, since the first wish, has helped 3,600 children. Have had a special assistance enhancements and support to all the families and going to camp. And so I think it's a very good uh, charity. So we're going to do that for, everybody hasn't put in so much money to grow a beard. If you don't put any money, you don't get to grow a beard. And uh, we'll go from there. And anybody who wants to join with us, we'll take your money.
Okay, Chief, um, just to expand a little bit, it was somebody very close to our township family who took advantage of the, of that, that rainbow thing. So it's, it's, it's important to our police department. It's important to us. And uh, pending my wife's approval, I'm going to be in on it. And it's, mine is going to be grayer than yours. So uh, consider me part of the challenge. I will cough up and we'll see. And then again, if the, if the township public wants me to shave it off because it just looks horrible, um, they can throw in some money in the pot and I'll shave it off.
Some people have a hard time growing beard.
So, e- either, either way, either way, you're going to get some, you're going to get some contributions to this. So again, pending my wife's approval, but I, I want to show solidarity and let's make, let's make this a successful effort.
Thank you. It's uh, Rainbow Connection out of Oakland County.
Thanks, Chief. Uh, Chief, can I ask you to, that mouse, the, the mouse up there for the computer? Because the mouse I have here isn't working. I've got some special effects. I've got some PDFs to show on the board. But with that, thanks, Chief. Um, Mr. Assorti, attorney, attorney report? That's what I like to hear. Um, Mr. Ream?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Uh, I have a few items I'd like to report, um, and some comments, I guess. Beginning of the meeting, Finance Director explained the uh, audit. And uh, I know at the previous meeting, I wasn't, I wasn't here. But the successful audit takes place because what you may or may not have reported at the last meeting is why I bring that up. We do mid-year budget reviews, which took place last month. And I don't know if you spoke about that. But I think at least three or, three of the four of you participate in those meetings with the managers in the departments. So it's not something that just happens. We track these things all year. And um, it's like Mr. Duker coming forward. That was an exciting problem for us to have that just unwound over the past week. That's a good thing. When um, when I, I knew, I, I've been out uh, between some travel and some illness. But um, we knew that we had a lot of interest in those units. And a few weeks ago, Mike was talking about, maybe we want to add to these things. And then all of a sudden, they were filled and we had more people in line. And then it was, Mr. Contractor, are you interested? What can you do? Give us a price. And that's a process. That's not something you want to just make up. So that's a good problem to have. And it all came together actually this afternoon. So um, it's frustrating when that happens, but it's also exciting. So. But that is, that is good news. Um, Mr. Freo, um, November 12th, I believe is the date. Um, I didn't catch if you mentioned that earlier. The reface of the township website will be launched. Um, we think we're in good shape. We've got a few more things to test and try and update, check a couple of updates on the pages. For those of you that have gone to your board packets, you see that new format once you go to that. That'll give you, that gives you a taste of what the new page is going to look like. It's a different theme. And it's got all the latest new-fangled pulldowns, I guess you could call it. Is it, anything you want to add? But, but again, our website, our website's an information bulletin board. It's kind of the encyclopedia of Grosse Ille. So we're, we're looking forward to having that refaced and updated. Then, as I mentioned earlier, I was out. Um, I want to compliment the staff. I had the opportunity to be gone on a family vacation. Was gone for about a week and a half or so. Came back in the office for a few days. Um, last couple of days of the trip, I got sick. And I was off a whole nother week, just flat on my back, miserable. But I want to compliment the staff and the management team and the entire staff. I did get a few calls, but that's okay. I expect to and I want to. But the things that were addressed, the things that were taken care of, and um, some of the things that were updated to me today. A lot of people pitched in. They were great team players. They helped each other in different departments and took care of things. And they all know who they are. And I want to compliment everyone. It makes me feel good to know that. Even though I, I'd planned my week and a half away that ended up, you know, two days in the office and then off for another week being sick was not what I planned on. But it's good and I feel confident knowing that things were addressed and service to the public was taken care of. So staff, all of you, and especially the managers that really helped each other out, I want to thank you. So you guys know who you are. And then last item, Mr. Supervisor, I didn't know if you were um, going to have Mr. Thiel give the update of um, waste hauling on your report?
That's in the plan, yeah.
Or if you'd like him to do that now?
Um, I'll invite him up in mine.
Okay, all right. And then you did get the DDA updates as well?
I have it. Angela, Angela left me the list.
Gets to speak for the meeting, so thank you.
We're working like a well-oiled machine. Thanks, Dale. Good to have you back. Um, okay. Let's see if we can use some high-tech and get some pictures here. I'll start with it before I get into my fumbling around on uh, technology. First, just a quick announcement. It didn't get much press, at least not where I was. Uh, John Conyers, John C. Conyers Jr., uh, formerly our, our representative of the United States House, passed away on the. John Conyers, John C. Conyers, Jr., uh, formerly our, our representative of the United States House, passed away on the twenty-seventh of October, two thousand nineteen. He was ninety years old. He was our representative until, uh, the census of two thousand ten and then we got redistricted. But, uh, on a personal note, he was a genuinely decent guy. Um, and I have some, some stories that really changed my mind about how his mind worked, but those are my stories. Uh, hooray for Halloween. Uh, Ms. O'Farrell was, was out of town on a personal matter and that took over. Annette and, um, Jean took over, ran, ran the parade and everything ran smoothly. It ran smoothly because the weather was reasonably good and nobody got hurt and there were a lot of kids running around and, uh, it, it went very well. It was a lot of fun. Uh, my problem being at the front of the parade, I couldn't see the Witch Wives of Grosseil with their dance routine in the back. But that was, you know, I caught a little bit of it at the end. They are awesome. They're kind of scary, but they, they were awesome. Uh, so let's look at some pictures now. I think that's what I want. There we go. So the first thing is, uh, Natureland Conservancy, Kim mentioned this. Actually, there. Okay, so their annual meeting is going to be, as she said, it's on the, uh, November ninth, Saturday morning at the Grosseil Golf and Country Club. And it's on high water levels. Uh, I always ponder when they say, next year we predict it to be higher than this year. Well, they didn't predict how high they were going to be this year, so good luck predicting next year's, but we'll see what she has to say. Uh, the Natureland Conservancy, the Owl Prowl on the second, I was talking to Peter, the, the president this morning. And they anticipated about twenty-five people coming to the Owl Prowl. Over sixty showed up. So, if you want to come to this and get a good seat, I recommend getting there early because they're getting a lot of attendance. These are worthwhile events. So I recommend attending. I intend to be there. Uh, next, I went on a ma- tour of the McLeod site. The demolition is going on well ahead of schedule and the estimate there was, uh, all the buildings will be down by April, which is about a year ahead of time. Some of the problems they've run into are just, they're just amazing. Bringing down the, uh, the stoves, those four or five silo-looking structures. Uh, they were designed to resist heat, so cutting them down with a torch is a very challenging problem. They didn't know what to expect. They managed to do it safely. In terms of air monitoring, what's important to us being generally downwind in an area of prevailing westerlies. There have been no exceedances of any known contaminants at any of the sites. So, I didn't know that manganese was their primary concern. I would have thought asbestos. I would have been wrong. Uh, manganese is a primary concern. No manganese, uh, has, has left the property. No, no measurable amount of asbestos. So, they're, they're, I'm going to say they're, they're doing a good job, but it's costing millions. So let's find my next picture here. And that will be an upcoming event. This is Mega. You will probably find this interesting. The Community Advisory Group Workshop. It's going to be held November fourteenth, seven to nine PM. I have flyers for this in the back of the room. I can get you more. So here's the information on it. It's your chance to, you know, to participate in what's going on with the Superfund. There's the steps. It's already been created. Can you serve? Yes, you can. So, I got this from, um, it was from Diane Russell from the EPA. She is from the Flint area. But anyway, she'll be hosting this and it's the Westfield Activities Center. We're just across the bridge in Trenton. So again, the flyers are out there. We'll get this on the, posted on the website. Now, moving along. Going to ask, I'm going to ask, this is a copy of a mailer you're going to get. The, uh, question that comes is what's going to be different? Derek, do you want to walk through this with me? Are you, you are the point of contact and?
Uh, as the supervisor had mentioned, everybody, uh, in town should be receiving, uh, a copy of this flyer this week. It just is an introductory flyer, which, uh, gives contact information for the new waste hauler and then also some details about the new service. Um, I believe, um, we have poster boards at Kroger's, CVS, or, um, CVS and then at the, uh, at the, uh, post office. That show the two-day route that we're moving to, which is probably the largest change. And the flyer will have that information on it as well. So, um, that's probably the largest one. The new waste hauler is taking all the same stuff the previous waste hauler did. Um, and when I, uh, when I mention that, I'm, I'm referring to bulk trash. Um, they're going to be able to pick up, uh, trash from containers that you used to use. So, any of your normal thirty-five gallon containers that you get at Lowe's or Home Depot, they'll take that. They'll take bulk trash, uh, you know, if you have a couch or something like that, they'll generally take that, that type of thing. Um, so what they pick up really is not going to change. So residents shouldn't see much of a, a difference, um, in providers and what they pick up. Um, and the holiday schedule stays the same. The yard waste schedule stays the same. The yard waste rules stay the same. Uh, there is a slight difference, um, in what products will be, uh, accepted as far as recyclables. And this flyer, as Brian had just, uh, changed the page to, uh, will have a bit of information on the bottom half of the third page, which will showcase, um, all the different items that they take and what they don't take. But for the most part, it's, it's very similar to what all the residents have been accustomed to on recyclables. The biggest difference being glass. They're not going to take glass now just because there's no market for it. Um, it's not that the township's receiving any kind of cost savings because we're eliminating glass. It's just simply that there's no market for it. So rather than pick it up, take it to the sorting facility, sort it, and then take it to landfill. We're just asking that you put it right in the trash so it goes one way rather than the roundabout way. For those individuals that rent, uh, trash cans from Waste Management currently, um, those will be picked up next week. So leave those out at the curb, um, during your normal pickup day. So the last day next week, you, uh, you're having your trash picked up by Waste Management. Leave your trash can out there. They'll take that with them. Uh, that's for those individuals that are renting Waste Management containers. For those that are buying containers from Priority, um, you're going to contact Priority directly at the number that's on the mailer and they will deliver that to your house for fifteen dollars. Um, those will be delivered next week as well. So either Thursday or Friday of next week, those will be delivered. So, your old container should be picked up. Your new container should be dropped off at about the same time. You are not required to buy a trash container, um, from the new provider. You can continue to use whatever trash container you're used to. So that is not a requirement for those individuals that have become accustomed to doing that or using that larger ninety-six gallon container. Um, those are available through the new provider. Uh, a notice went out from Waste Management to those individuals that lease containers that say, uh, they will pick up the recycle container, container, containers as well. That is only for individuals that were renting a larger recyclable container from Waste Management. That did not refer to your standard eighteen gallon blue containers. Uh, I know there, there was something on Facebook. People said you got to leave that out there to be picked up by Waste Management. That is not what that pertains to. It's only for those individuals that are renting containers from Waste Management. So, I just wanted to clear that up a little bit. But other than that, that's only the, the pickup day, the elimination of glass. Those are probably the two largest things. And the pickup of the containers and the drop-off of the new ones for those that want to rent or purchase containers. Those are the three largest issues. But other than that, everything else pretty much stays the same.
I think that was the objective. Make it as seamless a transition as possible. Keep the costs down.
Correct.
Um, you know, the DPS staff and, I'm sorry, the commission did a lot of work, a lot of research. Went to some interesting places, did you not, Jim? But this is the best day we could, I just, and I know that we're getting that situation where they're ninety percent doesn't get the word. But we're trying every, every means possible, including the mailer, to get the information to you so that, so that it is seamless.
Right. And, and the, I want everybody to be, everybody to be confident that the township did everything to try to minimize the cost to the residents. I mean, we could have stayed with Waste Management, um, but residents would be paying three to four hundred thousand additional above and beyond, um, what they were paying to stay with Waste Management. So, that's why we're switching to Priority is to maintain the cost for the service. Um, it was really in the interest of the taxpayers to make sure that everybody was getting, uh, the best bang for their tax dollars. So, that's why we're going with Priority. They were the little bidder and, uh, we're confident they're going to provide good service for us, so.
Okay, well, look, look for your mailers, folks. Uh, all the information is there, so.
Thank you.
And thank you. And thanks to the commission for that, for that good work. Okay, working down my list. At my last DCC meeting, where is it? Uh, Eric Sabri, our treasurer, announced the, uh, Third Annual Veterans, I mean, you can read it as well as I can, Veterans Resource Fair. Receive information on veterans and benefits, healthcare, employment, housing, utility assistance and more. It's Thursday, November twenty-first, from ten to two, at the Bellagio Banquet and Conference Center, uh, in Dearborn Heights. And Debbie Dingle, Rashida Talib and Sergeant Major Ronald Green. And I am not responsible for the spelling of community, uh, but it really sticks out. But anyway, if, uh, those are fellow veterans who have some concerns, uh, are unsure, would like some answers. It's, that's why this is being held. So hopefully, if you have some concerns, can't seem to get the answers you want, there's an opportunity for you to presumably either get the answers from those officials there or from one of your fellow vets who may have had the same problem at a previous time. And let's see, speaking of elected folks other than us. Again, met, uh, when, when our, uh, state rep Darren Camilleri had his, uh, coffee klatch at the, uh, at the Tasty Freeze, which was, I didn't eat coffee that hour of the day anyway. Um, he has scheduled a couple of events. This is, uh, Protect Public Education. He was an educator. Might be an interesting take on that. Uh, again, November twenty-first at six PM. And more important, I think, to everyone will be... I'm going to have copies of this made and I'll have cop- I'll have copies on the website. This is, I hope that went, that's about as full screen as I can get with that. But he's setting up sort of a satellite office over at, uh, the Gibraltar, Gibraltar, uh, town, yeah, Gibraltar City Hall. It's hard to say that. Anyway, it's, it, right now, basically it's just going to be a table. But, uh, the opening event is, uh, he'll be there with Stephanie Chang, who is also our, uh, our state senator. So there's an opportunity, if you haven't met Darren or Stephanie, here's a chance to, uh, lean on them for a while or just say hi. And that's just a nice picture. I'll leave it up there. That, that's the end of my pictures. I'll move on to better stuff. And I, I love when Angela presents these because she's just, just a happy, just a, just, just a pleasant person to deal with. So the, the big event we had, or one of the big events we just had, uh, that, on a request for quotes or a request for, um, a proposal. The DDA has been very hard at work. Almost complete the selection of a firm to continue the planning process with improvement and design enhancement at Macomb Street. More details to come next month. We met two weeks ago and interviewed, uh, three consulting firms on what they would like to do, what their best efforts are to make our business district more of a business, more of a destination, um, just to make it work better, make it different, make it appealing. So, more details that'll come out, uh, we'll be soliciting your ideas too. We're the, we are the customers. Ladies Night will be November fifteenth from five to eight PM. She's loading up the new bags as, as we speak. Maps and bags will be available at the Macomb Commons. So, November fifteenth, Friday evening, five PM, Ladies Night. I will not be there, but Angela will show you a good time. Additionally, Lights at Lions, okay, you can register to sponsor a tree for Lights at Lions Tree Display. Sixty-five dollars gets you a tree with lights and sponsorship sign. You just put up the decorations. Use it a chance to market your business, recognize a family member, just get involved in the community fund. And again, contact Angela. More information at extension two-five-three or angela s at grossel dot com. And Island Glow, which is kind of a, uh, collusion event, popular word, um, will be December sixth at Macomb Street. So rec and the DDA, uh, again, working together, making these events better. Uh, meet at Macomb Street. This is, some parts of my job are better than others. This is one of the best parts. Uh, come out for the, for the Island Glow, the festivities, the band, the parade down Macomb Street, the tree lighting and, uh, the parade up and down Macomb Street afterwards. It's, it's good fun and lately it has not been the coldest night of the year. Okay, I threw out my thread about joining the, the No Shave November. We will be closed Veterans Day, November eleventh. Um, the Holiday Boutique, the last thing I, if I want to stay married, I should put this flyer up. An excellent publication. It should have been mailed to everyone, or at least all the Historical Society members. Uh, Gene Krokowski did this. And it gives some information on when the boutique opens, which is the weekend before Thanksgiving, pretty soon. Uh, I, I used to say, if they don't have it, you don't need it, but we've got a lot of other shops on Macomb Street that have interesting things too. And includes in Grosseil Hardware, which has large capacity trash toters. I think they have two sizes. So you don't have to go to Home Depot. You can get them right at, uh, Grosseil Hardware. I don't know if that's your best bet for a Christmas present, so let's go to the, I, I, I will recommend to stop by the Holiday Boutique and stay at home and shop at Macomb. With that, we will be closed Veterans Day, open, uh, Tuesday morning. And I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. That concludes my comments. Let's, uh, step back to the schedule and open it to public comment. But that's a nice picture, so I'm going to leave it up there. So, Mr., okay, I didn't know whose hand it was. I saw a hand. Mr. Heil?
I'm Bill Heil. I live on East River. Basically, I'd like to very briefly offer two affirmations. Uda, I thought you were speaking to the point when you were talking about the agendas or about the, the idea of, uh, more clearly the, the, uh, timing on when we bring proposals to people. Government moves like a glacier. Business moves more quickly. That's true. And I think the sense of proportion and the balance on what we do and how we do it is important there. We need to have the public have time to consider things. It was carefully explained that in this situation, it made economic sense to move more quickly. But I want to affirm that principle that you were talking about. I would wish that on some occasions, we have been a little more careful to use time to allow people to be informed and to make decisions. And then I'd like to affirm what Duncan Murdoch had to say about, uh, having smoke detectors in your home. Uh, we have them at our house and it very well could be the case that it saved our house. We had a fire on our deck and Duncan was talking to me at two in the morning as I'm squirting a garden hose on my deck to put out some fire. And we laugh about it now because nothing happened, but he's right. I also felt a brief of affirmation there. I used to sell commercial insurance and I wanted people to put their fire extinguishers outside so that if they ran away, then they had something to come back in to squirt at it so they have some guts to do it. And he was basically saying something similar to that. So I wanted to offer those two thoughts tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heil. Uh, other public comment? Mr. Clark?
Woody Clark, Park Lane. Legal fees?
Yep, I have attorney fees. Um, Woody had called earlier and so I did them for the month of September and October, um, through this board meeting. Um, so Thomas Assorti and the amount of fourteen thousand, three oh nine ninety-seven. And Kat Stangster and Wisaki and the amount of seven thousand, one seventy-eight seventy-five. So that was for the month of September and the month of October.
Those were three meetings?
Um, probably. Yeah, two months. Two months. Yeah, probably the last three meetings.
Okay. Oh, yeah. We, uh, in my area, we have the helicopters coming over quite low. And when I say low, you can hear the wheel go woof, woof, and you know he's low. So I was wondering, maybe we have the fire department, not fire, police department tell these cop, uh, these, uh, army people or Navy or whoever's flying over the top to move away, you know, get so close to the house. Okay. I don't know why they do. Pete?
Okay. I mean, it's, 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 it's fully legal. It's, it's open airspace.
I know it's legal, but it seems like there's going to land right on top of my house.
A little outside my control, but if I, if I have a point of contact, I will pass that along.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Other public comment tonight? I'm sorry, Ms. Mega?
Good evening. My name is Judy Mega. I live on Lafayette. Um, I had a question that you, if you can't answer it now, maybe you can address it next time. Or, um, if they combine precincts four and five, I wondered how that affects the, um, allocation of the precinct delegates that we get from the state. Um, will they be? I mean, I think there's five in... five in each at this point. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Um, also, thank you for the information about the, uh, EPA hearing. I hope that people attend that. It's an awesome opportunity to try to get involved and be the voice of the community. They're looking for members of that Community Advisory Group from all different areas. They want fishermen. They want, you know, all different people who are gonna be affected by not only the cleanup, but what might come next. So, um, I encourage everyone to, to attend that. Um, also, I created a petition online last week urging the, uh, city councils of Trenton and Riverview to do whatever they could as far as zoning, to not allow an intermodal shipping port at that location. I got 742 signatures, most of them in two days. Um, they're still trickling in just because it's kind of disappeared offline as, you know, I have to repost it in order to bring people's attention to it again, but I have no doubt that we'll get more signatures. Many, many comments urging that something else, anything else, mixed-use light industry, anything else be put in that location. Um, we have a Facebook page that is Preserve and Protect Downriver. Um, for anybody who didn't get a chance to sign it, um, if they, they can go to that, and that's gonna be kind of a central hub to keep people updated on, like, the EPA meeting, the petition, um, various things that come up, uh, will be posted on that Facebook page, which again is Preserve and Protect Downriver. I will email all of you a copy of the petition, including the signatures. Almost 400 of the signatures were from Groseal residents, um, and then a good portion from Trenton and Riverview as well. So, people are very concerned, and um, I didn't get anybody that said they wanted it, amazingly. Um, so I think that was it. Um, I got a chance to watch a lot of, um, Congressman Conyers' funeral today, and I was, I mean, I knew a lot about him, but I had, he changed the lives of every single person in this room and, and our, and our grandkids and the people who came before us. The stuff that he did while he was in Congress for all that time was amazing, and he made the world a better place. So, it was, it was quite an awesome tribute today, um, if you can catch a replay of it online. But, um, I think that's it. Thank you much. Yes.
I have a quick question for you, Judy.
Yes.
For those of us who no longer Facebook, is there a venue to get to your petition or to your group?
They can, you can, you can email me at izojudy, I-Z-Z-O-J-U-D-Y, at yahoo.com, and I will send a copy of it. I'll email a copy of it to you. I created the Facebook page to get it kind of off my personal stuff and off other pages and onto a central hub. So, but yeah, izojudy@yahoo.com. I'll gladly email you, um, a copy of the petitions, and, and you'll have it when I email it to you as, as a board and as a group. So, um, pass it on, share. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, I have, Judy, if you'd like, I have extra copies. I've got a stack of them. Uh, I don't know who all wants to leave here with one, but those are some extras, and if you need more, just let me know. Okay? And thank you. Um, other public comment tonight? I see none.
With that, motion, motion to adjourn.
Second, those in favor of adjournings signify, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None offered. 9:30, we'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We covered a lot of territory. We'll see you December 9th. Have a Happy Thanksgiving. Be safe.